So we're recording. We're ready to go. Welcome, everyone. We welcome you to our planning commission meeting tonight. We appreciate your social distancing and the masking and all the other things that need to be done. We, we, this is only, I think, the second meeting that we held live since the rules were kind of put back in place and we need to have a live meeting. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation and we look forward to hearing from those who may have items before us and then those who may have comments on them. So, welcome to all the commissioners. We glad to see you. It's been a while. So, let's see. One short, we still expecting someone? We've got Juan Conns on one way.
Yes, sir.
Great, Juan. Good to hear you there. All right, let's begin our meeting tonight. Our first item, let's, let's start with the minutes first from our July 9th meeting. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look over those minutes and review those. Any changes or notes from those minutes from anyone? I'm hearing anything. Is anyone willing to make a motion to approve minutes? Scott makes a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. And then let's see, any other discussion for those minutes? We'll do this by group vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Even minutes to be approved. Our next item on the agenda is something that we do every year about this time, which is the election of the chair and vice chair for the coming year. I've been privileged to serve as your chair for the last year and it's been an exciting experience. And I was looking forward to letting somebody else take the job and try that for a while. So with that, let's see, our current vice chair is Josh Sunlaw. So just so you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that that person moves up to chair, but that is who our vice chair is currently. So given that, we will open the floor for nominations for chair for the planning commission for the coming year.
Has it been in the past have vice chairs moved into chair positions or is it just totally dependent on?
For a while.
That's been common where we do it so frequently. We often see that happen here in Kaysville where they, they never will. They often give a little their practice. Chair during the meeting when the chair tasks and has a vice chair, but you can't overuse the words. To write something like that, but it's not an absolute brilliance. It's wicked.
I'd make a motion that Josh Sunlaw be the chair.
Okay. I'll second. Do you want a third? Why not?
It's the next thing we know.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we will take a vote on whether, since Josh is the only nominee, whether we then go ahead and as the chair by after the mission. All in favor of Josh Sunlaw as the chair for the coming year, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Juan. Okay, I think it looks, sounds like it's unanimous. Josh Sunlaw will be our new chair. Now, let's open the floor for nominations for vice chair. The nominee Scott. All right, second there. Thank you. Scott, you all right with it? Hearing no other nominations, once again, would Scott be the only nominee? Let's take a vote to appoint Scott as the vice chair for the coming year. By information, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Scott, he will be our vice chair for the coming year. Great. All right, that takes care of that with Josh not being here. And I'll continue if that's all right to carry out the chair duties for this meeting. And then Josh and/or Scott will take up chairmanship if that makes me. All right, thanks. That went pretty quick.
He's also not here.
Yeah. That's right.
I don't know. I remonated you again, but didn't sound like you wanted to go.
I, you know, it's been fun doing it for years. I'll leave you with that. It's been a most interesting year, let's put it that way. You know, because we did a lot of our meetings live Zoom and that's, that's a challenge. Open meetings that way and try and keep things moving, so. But now we're back live and Josh is not going, well, maybe. And we still have the option for members to participate electronically really better than time.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a physical location we're reading currently, but members can't participate as members of nine.
Yeah, okay. All right, our first item of business on the agenda is a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for a construction business at 3A2 East 200 South. Applicant is Ken Morley. I will turn first to the staff.
All right, I am presenting this one. So Mr. Ken Morley, he has a handyman business he wants to run from his home. He has a trailer that he's going to store off property. I believe his dad has a lot he's going to store that on. On a rare occasion, it might be parked in front of his home, but that's rare. He will have no employees that report to be addressed. He won't display any advertising home or advertising signs at the home. And all the materials will be dropped off at the job site. So staff recommends approval of his proposed conditional use permit with no additional conditions.
Okay. Great, thanks Heather. Any questions for Heather? No questions? All right, let's turn to the applicant, Mr. Morley, if he's here. Come on up, Mr. Morley. I don't know where it stands.
It's over there.
Right up there, it's fine. Okay. And anything you'd like to tell us about your application and your business?
I don't know what to say. I guess most of my life I've worked in construction business. Started when I was 12 with Mount LePaul. Your friend Paul Morley is here in town. Built houses with my dad. Been in lots of different trades since then and recently decided that it's time to go full time on my own. And moved to Kaysville about six, eight months ago from the Logan area. But anyways, I need a license to work.
Great. You're aware of all of the requirements and conditions that the city has on operating a business like that out of town?
Yes.
And no problems with those?
No, not at all. And I am licensed with DOPL, so.
Right, okay. Any questions of the applicant from commission?
When you're, just because it says that there's a chance that your trailer will be parked sometimes on site, do you have an offsite location that that's parked or is it?
Yeah, my, my dad lives in West Kaysville and he has lots of property.
Okay.
So it's out in the field with lots of other trailers that we have.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Mr. Morley. Thank you. Is there anyone here who would have an interest in addressing this? Okay, seeing nobody. We're not required to have a public hearing, but we do sometimes well take comments as appropriate. All right, with that, anything else to add to that, Heather or Lyle? Okay, commission, your pleasure on this. We have the recommendation from staff, as you see from the staff report, and consider indicators that just to approve it. There are no other conditions that they are recommending placing. And if this is compliance with all the, this is.
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for major home occupation B for handyman for Ken Morley, 3A2 East 200.
Awesome. All right. Motion by Steve, second by Larry, to approve the conditional use permit as recommended by staff. Are there any other discussions or motion? All right, and let's go ahead and vote. There, let's start with you, there. Aye. I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, votes aye.
Aye.
Aye, Scott?
Aye.
And Juan?
Aye.
That is unanimous, so the conditional use permit is approved. Thanks, Steve Morley, appreciate it. Second item on our agenda is a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for Blue Moon Lawn Care and Landscaping Services. At 114 North 100 West. The applicant is James Giles, I believe. So turning into Heather, I believe. Heather?
So being speaking with Mr. Giles, he's got a pickup truck that he'll use to transport his lawnmower and other equipment to job sites. When he's not using his equipment, it will be stored behind his home. He's got an area where it won't be seen and just looking to get a business license for a contract that I hope we were received to do landscaping. So staff is recommending approval with no additional conditions, other than they receive their business license and I'll turn that to you.
Looks like they've got some commercial uses adjacent to them on the east. So.
And the north.
And the.
Yeah, and, yeah, right. Yep. Okay. Thanks, Heather. Any questions, Heather, by the commission? Okay, seeing none, let's hear from Mr. Giles.
So our business is pretty small. And it's really just maintenance type work. We don't do any heavy landscaping. Just two 21-inch mowers and blower and trimmer and a header. All puts in the bag of pickup truck and off we go. And that's all anybody ever sees of us.
Right. Okay. Good, thank you. Commission members, any questions? Mr. Giles. All right. Thanks, Mr. Giles, appreciate it. All right, anything else to add? Staff? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, and again, once again, there are no additional recommendations or conditions that are recommended by the staff. Just again, compliance with the requirements of the organs which have been to be accomplished. Commissioners, ready for any action?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit for major home occupation B for Blue Moon Lawn Care and Landscaping Services. For James Giles at 114 North 100 West, as has written in the staff report.
Okay. Motion by Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Any other discussion by the commission? All right, let's vote. I will vote first. I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
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 Toby said aye.
Aye.
Scott is aye. Juan?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, again, unanimous vote approving the conditional use permit for home occupation. Thanks, Mr. Giles, appreciate it. All right, our next. Item on the agenda is a, this is actually, for those of you who may recall from our last meeting, this item came before us and there were some questions that arose with regard to the number of students coming and potential traffic issues. So this is, once again, on our agenda. It is conditional use permit for major home occupation B private group swimming lessons at 2052 West Peach Blossom Drive. Applicant is Cameron Garner. And we will turn to Heather, or Lyle. Heather?
So the chair, pretty much, they discussed it previously for a minute. Had a employee concealer on the match on the screen through the packet. They have been doing swimming lessons. Did with small groups, it's weekday mornings, 8:30 to noon. Their exceptions, between 30 and 45 minutes. And because of the group lesson nature, the home occupation actually required a limited number of students for vehicles transporting students. Typically be the staff where they go with students. So with that, our recommendation is to be limitation number of students to be 10 per class. There have been some correspondence coming in. Commission's been good prepared of those where the neighbors are aware of the business and at least for those that I spoke with, they're happy to have the business there, but it sounded like they're pretty popular. So a fair amount of traffic, so I think the applicant probably could help us this evening understand better how they operate. Had some discussion of leaving the classes in our, how frequently they do it, how many students at a time. Maybe how to manage that. They're probably set to be done essentially for the season, once we go until school starts. This will get it in place, runs with the property, so as we license them year after year, we continue to do it. Make those regulations, this now that make that sort of, sort of functions and keeps them able to be happy as well to get to operating. So with that, be happy to answer for the questions now that is here this evening. And probably request a chat with this one to help us just better understand what they're up to, how we can progress and the concerns and issues that may warrant.
Right, okay. All right, any questions of staff? Do you all recall this? It's been a while now, but do you all recall this one and some of the issues that were raised with regard to traffic and parking? All right, and let's turn to the applicant, Mr. Garner.
Aye. Tell you a little bit about the business. We run 30-minute group classes. We run two group classes in the same, in simultaneously, four kids in each class. And then we have two private sessions that are going on as well. So four different classes, two private, two group. Every half hour we're rotating through that. Like Lyle said, 8:30 to 12:00, Monday through Friday, we're done. It's an eight-week program. So we start usually about the first part of June and then we end eight weeks later. Our last class was the end of July, so we are not in session currently. This was the first, this is the third season, but this was the first season where we had some concerns from our neighbors with regards to parking. Basically, to the east there, they had some difficulty getting out of the driveway. So we communicated to our, our moms and dads who bring the children, asked them to leave two car lengths by both driveways on the east and the west to allow for easier departure from their homes. We also, and it's not on this picture, but just that south street heading off my driveway there, encouraged them to park there. There is, there's no driveways on that road or anything like that, so we encouraged them to park down that way. So if you look at it, worst case scenario, we're going to have 10 cars every half hour come to the home and swap out through that period. There is a lot of families that come and they've got one kid in each class. So obviously, the amount of cars is going to be less than 10, but worst case scenario, we need to plan for 10. And that's currently the setup there. Any questions?
Just, you're aware of the recommendations that the staff has made on this to have a 15-minute gap between classes to allow for the traffic to not be overwhelming and discourage parking in front of neighbors' homes. Which I guess you've described a little bit. And no problems with those recommendations?
You know, it's, it's tough for a business owner to say, we have to take a 15-minute break when you're paying someone hourly to teach class lessons, to say, in an hour, you know, in a two-hour period, we're going to have 30 minutes of unproductive time. And it's tough to be profitable. It's tough to do that. If that's what we have to do and that's the way we have to go, then away we go and away we figure out how to make it work for us. But you know, if there's some other options. In turn, you know, in my family, we decided, we discussed, well, maybe we don't let the parents come and stay with their children and it's more of a drop-off scenario. Where they come and they drop it off and then they, they go. And that way, there is no parking, there's no congestion in that area. If that's an option, then we can go down that road too. Just east of us, there's another swimming venue that does the same thing we do for a six-week period. They this year said no parents. And you know, in observation and stuff like that, I saw that, you know, people would come and go. And it didn't cause people to park and stuff like that and, you know, have the issues that we had. So as an alternate option, you know, maybe we can discuss that and see if that's something you feel more comfortable with. But you know, if you could say that we have to have a 15-minute break, we'll figure out how to make that work.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant?
Okay. I'm Mr. Chair, I'm specific to the applicant, but I believe with the contact that we received at our office and also a public hearing, but there may be neighbors on your edge.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it. As Lyle just noted, this is not a public hearing and a public hearing is not required, but we are open to hearing comments. Is there anyone here that would like to comment to us about this application? Yeah, come on up. Give us your name and address if you would, please.
I'm David Law and I'm one, two houses over. And again, you know, we love the Garners, we love what they're doing, so we let our grandkids swim over there. But again, that's the numbers and the cars. I frequently have three cars, four parked in front of my house. The next door neighbors always have the cars and so parking is the issue. And when you overlap, you've got, I mean, I've counted 15 to 20 cars at a time. Because you've got 10 dropping off, you've got 10 picking up. And they're waiting with their kids or their whatever. I mean, I've had them changing diapers out in front of my house and feeding the kids lunch in front of my house. I'm trying to cut the lawn and there's cars parked. So that's a concern, just the numbers of cars.
Would the 15-minute gap between classes be something?
Even a 10-minute, you know, they, I don't know. That would alleviate that some with the, with the not staying. But the problem with not staying, you're still picking up on the half hour and dropping off on the half hour, so you've still got all that congestion at the same time.
Yeah.
So. And then numbers of students, that's, if you've got private, how many is that all together, can you remember?
What's that?
How many out together? You've got group lessons.
10 every half hour.
10 every half hour.
Yes.
If you did, you would do a 20-minute, you would do a 20-minute lesson, so what was?
Yeah, it was just, it ended up being 10 people every half hour in the year.
Anyway, that's, they had 20-minute lessons, so you're having 38 hours?
No.
It's always been a half-hour lesson?
Yeah. For the group ones, how's our lessons for the private?
Okay.
Okay.
So our kids are in, they must've been on the private because they were 20 minutes, they were too long. Anyway, that's our, that's our observation.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Lyle, is there anybody online?
No, so the only participation online is our commission.
Just our commission, we're not taking that.
They're continuing.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, well, staff, anything else, staff?
Yeah, I think just helping be clear for us what the motion ends up being. 15 minutes is okay, notice if there's a reduction in that by our 10-minute gaps, number of students, other ways that we work to help resolve these issues. I think it sounds like the groups are four, two groups of four within group. Plus the one-on-one private, so it'd be up to 10 total students, four, four and two. The, some of the comments we've received and we've got to verify from staff or number of teachers, that's probably four teachers in the pool at a time. Again, the home occupation rules, we want to make sure that those are residents of that property, non-outside employees operating that. That may come into play also with the traffic. So I mean, if a little bit of cars should be there, but they're coming in, that's actually considered as well, taken into consideration.
So the rule on our home occupations is that they cannot have outside employees working at the residence, is that right?
Yeah, there's one exception to that if it's an office type. It's actually a home occupation A, where if you're making phone calls or something like that, you can have somebody come in. But when you have customers coming, it's a lot of employees also. But you have eight kids and they'll work with you, but that's fantastic. There's outside, we just want to make sure that it's, it is the home business, so otherwise it's a commercial.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right, commissioners, discussion? What are your feelings on this?
Yeah, this is Juan. I have a question to the staff. I definitely empathize with the neighbors regarding parking. I actually, maybe this is back to you, chair or the staff. You know, what is our purview here? Is that, you know, do we have oversight on parking, on public parking in this situation?
Lyle, all of you dressed up.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. And so it comes down from two parts. So the ordinance specific with the home occupation B is very specific on group lessons, that there be a limitation close on either number of cars, number of students. So in that case, you could say you don't have to deal with how many cars are parked on the street. But if you talk about the number of students, it would essentially address that. They could address it either way. The other piece of it is just under the standards within our ordinances for any conditional use, the planning commission has enough room to look at mitigating uses based on those standards. And one of those is parking and traffic. So it's not to impose additional burden on the area around their requested use. So I believe it's appropriate to consider from different angles. If you wanted to say, you know, maybe you don't limit them on number of students, but you know, their idea is if they don't have people staying, not more than five or six cars, whatever the number is, parked there at any time. Sounds like the number of students in the pool is not a concern. That's what we heard from neighbors.
Yeah.
It's again, the impact on the street. So you can address that in different ways. It sounds like there may be some creativity for the business and homeowners and how you can do that and still allow that in function as a whole.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, it'd be, Mr. Garner probably speaking of this in his case, we have a lot of these home neighborhood pools that these dudes used to sell since it was ahead of boarding town. Get the right bikes there and walk there. Often they live close and they'll come, occasionally they do drive in. So you may have a group of, you know, obviously, conceptions, 100 students that live close and walk there and it wouldn't have a street impact. So again, maybe there are other problems with that. So you can see how to address their concerns. You foresee you're reasonably anticipated, mitigate them. And again, we're not looking to stop them. The idea is just let's make it work.
Right, yeah, again, our rule on conditional uses is that reasonable conditions to mitigate, not prevent or stop, completely overcome, but to mitigate from less. And Juan, I think you raised a good point about the fact that it is public street parking and people are allowed, members of the public are allowed to park on public street. In this case, I think what, where the difference is, is that this is a residential zone and this is a business use that's being asked for. And so that may, additional impact on the neighborhood. And so we, I think, under the rules that we have in place for conditional uses, we can look at that impacting. Put some conditions in place to mitigate that if we think that there is something that's, that needs mitigation. So commissioners, I think, with the idea that there being potentially up to 10 cars every half hour or so coming onto the site. The staff's recommendation is that they be limited to 10 students per class, which doesn't seem to be a problem for the applicant. Staff's recommending that they have 15-minute gaps so you don't have a lot of cross-traffic. So that you have potentially like 20 cars there at the same time, even if it's just for a brief period or two gap. The applicant has said that they would really kind of like prefer not having a 15-minute gap. Maybe handle it some other way, like, you know, if that's the condition imposed, then they would have to comply with that. So what are your feelings?
This is Juan again. So I'm wondering maybe if there's a, a hybrid approach to satisfy everyone. Maybe something, since this is a conditional use permit and I'm assuming we are allowed to revise it if something were to happen. So maybe instead of 15, five minutes or some kind of, you know, meet-in-the-middle solution. I'm wondering if the, if that would work, how that would affect the petitioner's business and how the neighbors feel about it. And obviously, you know, the petitioner has recommended that you would communicate to the parents not to, just, just to drop off. Having said that, you know, the reality of it is that while some may heed to that, there are going to be some other ones, you know, maybe intentional or unintentional. So, you know, that, that's. So, you know, that's my question, is some kind of a meet in the middle solution?
Yeah, yeah, I guess one alternative that was broached was maybe stipulating that parents are not allowed to stay for the lessons, which would then mean the cars. Doesn't mean necessarily that the cars wouldn't be there, but parents can just sit in the car and wait if that were the case. But maybe, but probably enough of them wouldn't, they put something else and come back half an hour later, so. Quan's suggesting maybe a shorter time, ten or five minutes.
You know, I, well, I really hesitate to have any time here because, let me tell you the problem. You know, if people want to linger longer, they have the currency, it's gonna, you know, they're gonna lump into one area. I, I think some of the suggestions that the applicant made is probably the wisest way to do it, is encourage people, if they live close, to walk. Or for the kids to ride their bikes or, I think of those kind of things and just really put out the point that, hey, we don't want to impact our neighbors. Because, you know, they're concerned about this and, and I, I think that I would try that approach first and let them see if there's a way to mitigate this on their own and please the neighbors that way. And I think that's the best way and then not affect their business that way and just encourage people to come and to go. And if they want to communicate with the teachers, maybe come back a later time and talk to them and not have classes. But I, you know, I always hesitate and I put my rules on people, it makes it very difficult to, you know, to actually do it. Because I think this is a benefit for a lot of people.
Any other comments, commissioners? Applicant's asking, can they find a share? Come on, come on forward this to her.
We're not, we're not in the business to be a nuisance, you know, just simply cutting the lessons from thirty down to twenty-five minutes. They've come for a twenty-five minute lesson and then they're told to go, and then that next lesson starts five minutes later. That, that gives you allow, you know, let's say that there are ten cars parked there for the lesson, half of them go, you know, at least we're down to five and now we have ten more coming. I mean, that's going to mitigate it, you know, our goal is to get it down to zero and then get it back up to ten and then get it down to zero, but, you know, talk realistically, there may be some hangovers, some lag, there may be some of that, but if I can take from, you know, the concern of fifteen to twenty cars at any given point in transition time to get to where you've already got some leaving and you've got some coming, and that way you've got a lessons twenty-five minutes. They'll take a quick break, there's coming and going. Is that something that you feel more comfortable with?
We'll give the, we'll give the discuss.
Give a discussion and, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm not here with the nuisance, whatever, whatever works, we can figure it out. And if it doesn't work, then we cut it back even more. I'm okay with that.
Okay, thanks.
I think maybe that question is more, should go back towards the neighbor that had the, the concern. Ask him what his opinions are.
Oh. All right, Quan's ask if the neighbor that's here, we were just talking about some of the possibilities. I said, you know, fifteen minute chunk is a little bit bigger than it needs to be. A lot of you could cut the lessons, that's what we were talking about, cut the lesson by five minutes, so, so they finish at twenty-five after and the next one doesn't start for five or ten minutes, whatever. And that gives the instructors a break, it gives some other things, it gives a chance for some of the cars to clear out. I mean, that's the, that's the concern.
We're talking about like maybe five minutes break?
Five minute break, five or ten.
Five or ten, okay. All right.
Whatever, you know, to figure out on a schedule that doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, five minutes of swimming lesson isn't going to make a big difference, but fifteen minutes is going to be.
Right. You know, and we, at the same time, we can encourage the parents not to, to drop off their kids and we'll take care of them and come back, you know, and that way they'll mitigate that even more. Highly strongly recommend it, but it's not one of those you have to wear a mask, right? We highly recommend you do, and that will help mitigate it even more.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Lyle, did you have a little question?
I was going to throw out an idea for consideration, but I have no good narrative, but I'll put it up and give it anywhere. All your lessons, instead of, you could keep the thirty minute, but every fifteen minutes, they went started, so they overlapped. Four would came away at one time, four would came away another time.
Are you, so you're saying stagger the groups, right?
Stagger the groups.
All there at the same.
So that's interesting. Let's call those as well.
Okay. All right, just a comment. I like what Laurie said, let the applicant and the neighbors figure it out, and if they can't figure it out, then we might have some possible improvement. But let's see if they can work it out.
Yep, I agree. Chair, is there, procedurally, is it possible to let the petitioner, the neighbor, work this out and then, you know, for the next whatever, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, and then come back to us when they're ready and we take the issue back again later on tonight?
Well, I mean, we could, we could delay any action on this later, but I mean, at this point, we've, we've got one neighbor here and there may be others.
I think there are about five or so that emailed and commented as well.
Yeah. You know, I think we want to be careful that we're not saying that we will approve hopefully whatever the neighbors want, because in that regard, we may be abdicating our responsibility and our role. So I think we need to be careful of that, how we do that. But if you, if you all feel like you want to allow some time for the neighbors and the applicant to discuss it a little bit more. I mean, you're, you're done for the season, right, with lessons?
Yeah, we're done.
So you're not in any rush to get there?
No. And next year we'll bring a new, you know, I didn't know what happens next year.
So, what, you know, I mean, I guess that's a possibility to table it until the next meeting, allowing time for the neighbors and the applicant to discuss and then get a report back from them.
Well, I, I mean, the, the condition that we're trying to mitigate in this case is nuisance parking. That are, you know, in many ways, I think you've already solved one of the issues, which is people who are parking probably too close to ingress and egress.
Yeah.
Or just, you know, not being courteous or, I just like, I like this, because it says courteous.
Courteous?
That's not, that's, you've got this a long step. And so to me, that's not going to change and we're not going to know, I mean, the neighbors can think about all the stuff that had happened during the year and come back and try to mitigate those. But really, we're talking about what's going to happen next year, next season.
Right.
I, I would, I would almost rather say ten per class, five minute gap between class starts and end times to allow for traffic control, discourage parking in front of neighbors' homes, recommend, recommend that parents drop off instead of park. And then deal with it on a nuisance complaint. So another recourse, I think here would be code enforcement or you bring back for additional conditions, planning commission with the current conditions that are happening at that time. Because if, and I don't know what your structure is of your swimming lessons, but it's possible that this is going to be an head and flow problem. You might start with young groups of kids that kind of cycle through till they're older and they can ride their bikes and then after, you know, half a dozen years, it starts back and there all of a sudden becomes a balloon of parking issues again. So they're bringing little kids that sort of grow up through the swimming program. So I think it's going to just change yearly based on the makeup of the demographics, demographics.
Sounds like, I mean, you sound like you pretty much had the makings of a motion there. But I want to have the petition specialist.
You're welcome to discuss it, but that would be along the lines of what my motion would be.
I agree.
Yes, this is Quan again. I would rather table this and let the neighbors work it out. You're right, it will change with the demographics. Again, when it does, let the neighbors work it out. Again, I'm not saying that we advocate our role in this, but I believe that the neighbors and the petitioner, sounds like they're, you know, they, they can work things out and I have ability, I'm sorry, I have trust and faith that the neighbors and the petitioner can work it out. So that would be, so I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table the conditional use permit for major home occupation B for private group swim lessons located at twenty fifty-two West Peach Blossom for Peach Blossom Swimming for the petitioner Cameron Garner and to allow them time for the petitioner and neighbors to work out and come to an agreement. And then bring it back to the commission when that has been done.
Okay, so the motion by Quan is to table this to allow the applicant and the neighbors to discuss and bring back the results of that discussion to then hopefully be the basis for a motion for approval of the conditional use later. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jared's seconded that. All right, any discussion by the commission? My comment is, I, you know, I, I don't know that I feel strongly about either one. I kind of like Scott's approach, which is just to go ahead and improve it with the, the, he has, but, but I don't feel that strongly in terms of, because I, the applicant's not doing lessons right now, so that it's not like anything's pressing at this point, which will allow them to give some time to that, so. I could go either way. But we do have this particular motion on.
I'd also like to caveat that we have it back at the next commission meeting, so that we get it off.
So would you, would that be something you'd like to ask Quan to include in this?
Yeah, Quan, you should put that in motion, let me just bring it back to the commission meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so adding to the motion that this come back at the next meeting in two weeks. Any other discussion?
I don't know, I think maybe we always presume that we're doing something that the applicant wants. I would maybe ask the applicant if they're okay with tableing it. I mean, that's maybe what I would ask.
Okay, totally. Mr. Garner, what are your feelings on it?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because I'd love to have closure to it. Three years ago, I went through this process, it got approved and everything was fine through a minor technicality of, of, you know, the, anyway, it was approved and now it's not approved, now we're going through it again. I'd like to get closure to it.
Yeah.
If you really feel like we need to, to put the hammer down, go ahead and put the hammer down and tell me I have to have fifteen minutes wait time and that's fine. And then if, if we need to, and, and next year when we start planning our stuff, I can work with the neighbors, I can talk to them and I can come back and say, hey, here's, here's the current game plan for us, talking to the neighbors, they're okay with this and I'd like to go down this road. Road, I really, I really like his idea and it's something that, you know, we could go down that road and then, you know, if it's not working, I can put a, put a cut to it, we can make some changes and make some alterations to make it work even better, but I'm easygoing. You know, I talk to my neighbors regularly, they're my friends. And so, you know, I'd love to make it and just kind of put it, put it aside and have it done with, however, you know, you guys feel would be the best way. So fifteen minutes, I wouldn't be too happy, you know, I love this idea over here that he had presented, but if we could come to a closure, I'd love to have closure to it and then know that I need to plan next year with this restriction and, and see if we can work and if, you know, talk to my neighbors and at that point I can come back and say, can we tighten this up or can we make this work and this is what the neighbors like.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Thanks, Mr. Garner, appreciate it.
I do have a question from Mr. Garner. So, Mr. Garner, obviously you want closure, are you looking for closure at this meeting? Or are you okay with tabling it and then getting closure the next meeting in two weeks?
I'd love for closure now, just so I don't have to worry about it for another two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, the season's over, but it's such a minor thing that I don't want to worry about right now. I don't want to have to worry about it for two weeks.
Okay.
Appreciate that. All right, so we've heard from the applicant. And any other discussion?
So, so having said, having heard Mr. Garner's wishes to get closure at this meeting, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, thanks, Quan. Quan withdraws the motion, is that Quan with the second? Okay. So we are open again. Scott, you want to try a motion?
Yes, well, I have motion for approval of a conditional use permit for major home occupation B, private and group swimming lessons. The applicant Cameron Garner at twenty fifty-two West Peach Blossom Drive with the conditions in the staff report with the changes, number of students being limited to ten per class, a five minute gap between class start time and end time to allow for traffic, discourage parking in front of neighbors' homes, ask those parking to be courteous of the neighbors with parking issues and encourage participants to drop their children off and pick them up at the entrance.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, Quan, we'll let you, we'll, we'll take yours as a second. Discussion to the motion. One comment I just have, Scott, when you say discourage the parents or the drivers from parking in front of the neighbors' homes, you know, I'm just wondering, how do you do that? And certainly if you talk to them, I'm wondering if they make material that they have, that they should write up.
Yeah.
A little notice or something that goes with whatever written material they may give to their students to say, please don't include in there, please don't park in front of the neighbors or a little more detail about that.
Yeah, maybe some detail on that would be something along the lines of leaving at, at minimum a car length in front of and behind each ingress and egress. Encouragement of parking on the north-south road, which I should know because I live in this neighborhood, but, but the driveway is, that faces this driveway. And, and then just encouragement of, of those families that are able to ride bikes, walk or drop children off.
Okay. Any other discussion, if I could question? Let us vote. Steve, I believe you're up.
I vote aye.
Aye, I'll go aye.
Aye.
I'll go aye.
Aye.
Scott will aye, Quan?
Aye.
I'll go aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I will aye. All right, motion is approved unanimously. We have the resolution tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate those that were here for this. Both the applicant and to the neighbors. Thank you, appreciate. All right. Our next item is a public hearing and consideration of a development agreement to rezone approximately point four to five acres at two sixty-three east one hundred north from the RD residential diverse zone to the RM multi-family residential zoning district. And to include PRUD overlay zone for common open space subdivision with a private drive. The applicant is Jerry Larson and Michael Larson. Uh, let's see, can you get the address in there? So with that, our first move or our first step will be here from staff.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, we're discussing, following the, together with it as they're discussing the same project.
Okay. As well, right. And that is something we often do, we discuss both together and then, but we do take separate motions on the two, all right.
Okay, so my way of introduction, property not far away from city hall, it's in the center of town, two sixty-three east one hundred north. You drive past it, there was a brick home that exists on, in front of this, and you can see in yellow, we're simply discussing the center of the property behind it. Currently, there is a detached garage structure on that that would disappear if this project's to move forward. Zoning surrounding the property is presented as the RD, as mentioned, the first district. The history predates me, but I know a little bit about this area. It's an older part of town, part of the original, it's got the grid system on it, it's in the first areas that were developed under the original plan with Caswell City. And because of that, it sets a lot of diversity in the type of uses for this as hard residential, of single family, duplex, triplex, four and six places, getting scattered throughout. There's a lot of different housing types. Mr. Jessup, that's on the phone with us here in our staff, has kind of lived through it, so he can correct it. That kind of firm, back in about ninety-eight, ninety-nine, there were several projects that had gone on this part of town that the neighborhood kind of got together and said, look, we're getting our, our share of, you know, diversity in housing. The petition accounts that come up in this district because, and if anything new, we're looking for same family type development. And so the RD district was created, so it essentially acknowledges all that diversity and different types of housing that exist there, that says the new development would be single family. There's a little bit of a twist there that, you know, I personally haven't kind of noted in your staff report. When you have the PRUD combined with the RD, you may go to argue that you could do attached single family housing product. My suggestion to the applicant, based on what they're hoping to accomplish, is to call the RD, you kind of respect the district, I understand that, but and accomplish that same, in either case, it's that same process. but accomplished, I'd say. In either case, it's that same process we've heard before. Consider a legislative decision as to whether or not do the zoning, and the project type is appropriate for the area. So, just show a little bit of what they're thinking about. You can see how the property did create a private drive subdivision, that's some common open area. The best example I can think of, if you're driving around town, just behind Biker's Edge off the Crestwood Drive, is three, well, it's, it's identical, two separate buildings with three units in each, nearly in the same amount of ground. Differences, want to access off Crestwood, this would have a private general back. So it's very much what it looks like. Creates a hammerhead turnaround for access. There's essentially middle front yard, and up against that shared private drive. We've got the yard surrounding them. From the detail we've had, we've looked at this as staff, and based on the zone requested, we're up in night counters with little floorprints. What they proposed in the PRUD is they'd actually plant each unit as its own separate lot, in that way they could have potential for long occupancy. They can sell each individual unit, should they choose to. And the common areas would be the street and the grass areas around it. And this is a rendering concept of what that type of housing would look like, what they provided. It shows kind of the floor plan, a two-car garage, both living above, three-bedroom, in general, that they've already built. Same or twice, because within the development agreement, it's in your consideration, that is out of the exhibits, this is the state as you've seen previously. They provided to this same group, also built, is behind Vasa. There's some townhomes that are up there. And so they've done some recent projects in towns. They just showed some landscaping, fencing or walls that they put there that they would expect to use on this side. You can speak to that a little further. For your consideration, I'm going to introduce the two things together. The zoning action with the RM and the PRUD, it's a discretionary decision, it's legislative action. You, as the planning commission, should be able to make a recommendation to the city council on that, they have the time to say. Your task is, look at where the stands, if it makes sense in this neighborhood, this location, and how does it fit with the general plan. The other component would be with the preliminary plot. So again, that's a recommendation. If you feel comfortable with the zoning, you know, it definitely has a slight review, then you look at the project and say, okay, if the project meets the zone and some specs, then you recommend, again, to the council, for decisions to be made on the preliminary plot. Because of the development agreement in this, it's necessary to have that in order to allow the lots to be as close as they are. I muted you, Quan, and I hope there's some feedback. So you could look at that agreement. So you may see everything in there is exactly what you think makes sense for this area. You have the ability to make recommendations to alter that agreement, maybe additional amenities or different things, the landscaping. Two trees over here, you know. The development agreement has the most flexibility. We could do the both sides, from the developer's perspective, from the city's point of view, but ask for, say, the developments, so that we're content with and happy. My recommendation would be, whatever the council's direction is with it, if you're interested in moving forward the project, if there are changes to the development agreement, you ask for them, and they come back and go in this body for your view to make sure that what you'd like to see before we go to council. We have in the past that afforded a few things, so, you know, maybe you can add this, make sure the council sees it. I think the council's been hoping to see things that, if you're just looking for, makes you know you're comfortable with it, and haven't seen it before they take my turn. So with that, I'll close my remarks as introduced. Reminded, it is a public hearing, and the applicant has representation in the seat as well, where they can ask questions, and I'd be happy to do so as well.
Okay. Thank you, Lyle. Any questions of staff by the commission? How have the other similar developments been received around town that have done the same type of project?
So the one that went in off of Crestwood that I mentioned as the example, it was, I don't know when it was resolved, but the zoning was previously in place, and so it had quite a safe process. I've not heard any concerns or complaints with it. I guess I believe that I'd be able to turn out pretty well on that specific site. We don't have a whole lot of other examples of that. I think even the city site townhome project that I referred to, that this group developed, was similar, where the zoning was already teed up when the original applicant came in to start it. It's very well received by the commission, council, they liked the, as much as Caysville can push against what they family or non-single-family detached projects, they like the single-family detached type project and the way they plant these for that occupancy potential. The city site townhome, I've been very well received. They, anyway, they could pretty much finish the project and probably occupy at this point. It's, they can speak to that as well, but I've not heard concerns or complaints on that, that's created any issues with the community. It's kind of type of been a commercial area on the other. Probably some of the more recent townhome types. We have a few off Mountain Hollow, where some of the commission, maybe you can speak to those, crazy corridor, other areas. Under the ground, as those were constructed, it wasn't as involved as something initial. It's been four or five years, and actually happened a few of the different places. It's changed. There's always concern against the change, but once they're in, I've not been hearing much issue.
Lyle, can you, do you have any particular things that are in the development agreement at this point that you could call our attention to or plan out? What, what kind of things are there?
So in the development agreement, the key section is under the development standards and guidelines, it's section two. So it's essentially limiting it to six, so the zoning itself would allow, but just kind of solidifying, it's not eight units, it's not ten units. It would be what you see. Kind of a list of the architecture and fencing, landscaping, very typical. They do have, within the PRUD, ordinance, certain formula for how much open space you're supposed to have, based on plant lot sizes. They need, the typical standard for that would come up in space. We didn't outline any exceptions and variances from that within this. Really, the only difference is on section four, there are two sub, two base support yards. The balling requirements shall apply in lieu of standard requirements of the RD district. And the front yard's abiding the private drive, zero lot line would allow. Any separation for utilities is determined by planner view. So what that's saying is, the, the normal standard under the PRUD is a twenty-foot separation from a private drive. We often, through recent approvals, have allowed the house to go closer, but have garage door back on the beam. So there's that, just that example of variation in this sense, in case by case. The project dimension of Crestwood has the zero lot line, essentially will be right up against that shaped drive. That's, we call that the exception. That's what they're looking for in that the development agreement offers, is the ability to build that format, rather than being pulled off of this private drive that they were creating themselves. So I think other than that, it's pretty understandable, just kind of solidifying that you're going to get what you see, and making sure that you're okay with that allowance.
Good. Any other questions from staff?
Is the, the lane for the private street all the way north-south, like the property required for fire ingress or turnaround? Is there a reason that they, they maximize that as straight and didn't have any other right there to add this open space?
Yeah, we could probably speak to that a little bit further. We showed this to our fire chief. He was generally kept in a hammerhead concept, and they like longer is better, rather than shorter, but maybe some extra room there, so.
Fire trucks do have reverse. I've always wondered that.
What about, what about the drainage and water?
Yeah, that's something that we've not, would then detail staff at this level. We could if we want to see that. The applicant may have some answers and solutions for how it goes. Otherwise, I think the general is it would collect within the private street system. It's a system that has curb and gutter. It typically rolled earth, and that would flow out into the street and into our storm drain system within the yards, and more complex than that, and then they can have some more answers than I do.
Any other questions? Alright, then let's turn to the applicant next, and here from the applicant.
Hi, I'm Michael Larson.
How are you?
Good. How about you?
Good. Thanks for being here. Tell us about your project.
Well, yeah, I think Lyle did a great job of explaining it, but we've got that, that property there behind a single-family home. And the, the neighborhood directly to the east is multifamily. There's duplex there. Directly to the west, there's some fourplexes, and so we feel like the, you know, the neighborhood has some of the different types of housing, and so it would fit in well. And we wanted to work with the city and with the, you know, all of the neighbors to find something that would be, be a good site. I mean, currently, it's being used as just a garage shop. It's been that way for, for some time. And so this would be a, a good way to kind of maximize the use of this property. To address some of the questions that I heard, with the street and the length, exactly the, the fire to extend the, the hammerhead there was, was the purpose there. We are very open to suggestion if, you know, if this body or the council or whoever would rather see less than, we're not stuck on that. We just want to make a, a project that will work, you know. We would probably prefer more landscape. And then to the point of drainage, we haven't explored in depth there with civil engineering and everything that would go into all of the drainage, but like Lyle said, it's PRUD, that private street has, you know, curb and gutter. It all will run out to the, the storm drain system, and we'll do all of the, all of the engineering necessary to make that work. And if we need to have some, some ponds there, then we'll do that. The engineers will figure that out.
Great. You have questions? Commissioners, any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet. Alright, we may have some more coming up. Alright, thank you. Alright. Any other comments from the commission before we move to the public hearing? Questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, and so we will open that and allow those who have an interest in this project to address us and tell us what you, what you have to say, what you think. Just a reminder to the commission, this is a legislative action. It's, so this is discretionary. We do have full discretion here in terms of whether we think this is a good idea or not. And so our action, what we do, it'll be a recommendation to the city council, and the city council is, as we've quoted, will make the ultimate decision. But we are required to have a public hearing on this, and that means that the public is invited to make comments and comments. Well, for those of you who may be here to comment, we would ask you to, I don't think we have a lot of people here tonight to comment on it, obviously, because there's not a lot in the room. So we won't impose any kind of a time limit or length or anything, but we would ask you to be succinct in your comments and tell us what you think. And if you have heard someone else make a comment that you agree with, it's not necessarily to repeat comments, but just to say something to be like, I agree with the comments that somebody else has made, so that we can move ahead and consider it as a set of facts. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And if you are here to comment, if you come on forward or raise your hand and come on forward, we'll acknowledge you and hear what you have to say. Come on forward.
It's kind of a weird meeting, because we lived in this neighborhood for twenty years until we moved out. Goodbye, Cameron.
Give us your name and address.
I'm David Law, 2036 Peach Blossom Drive. My brother and I own, actually, the duplex that backs onto this property. So just to the east is our duplex. And there's a big chunk of property back there that's basically kind of a fallow field. It's, you know, to put a single-family home on that, you'd have to be charging somebody seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. But to put a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar in this neighborhood would just not work. Flaglot already exists. I know that there is a concern, because they started chopping all these, these were half-acre properties. They started chopping those up, putting all these flaglots. So as we live there, it's like we saw those little pieces coming here, and people putting houses behind houses. And so that was why they kind of put a kibosh on more of that. But I think the use for this particular piece of property with the fourplexes to the west and our duplexes on the other side would be very attractive, the things that they would put in there. I mean, we've watched the ones going behind, over by Vasa behind. And if you remember what used to be on that street, what's on there now is a whole lot nicer than what was there before. And I think this also would be a whole lot nicer than what's sitting there right now.
Before we move on, I'll just, also acknowledge, we've received several emails, email comments or public comments on the sheets that have been from the city, and I am assuming that you've all seen those, and those will be entered as part of the record here for the public hearing tonight. So we have received those, and hopefully, I think we've all read them. Alright, anyone else that would like to comment here?
Sure.
Come on.
My name's Jason Larson, so I have an interest in this project. Michael's my brother and my dad, Jerry. I live in the house just next to the flaglot. And I'm quite familiar with this piece of property. My dad bought it, I think, when I was six, and I raised chickens there and fed a horse. And, you know, you kind of see how times change and society changes. In the nineties, David Law, they've talked about the, the overlay of where they put a moratorium on this, this type of thing. And I, I think it makes a lot of sense. David also mentioned the cost of what you could do there with a single-family house in this neighborhood is somewhat prohibitive, and so it has kind of set how it sits now. So we would like to clean it up and use the property. I think it's a, a collective good for society. You'd probably pay a three-dollar-a-month power bill, and I don't know what the taxes are, but to put in some nice houses there, I think really benefits Caysville as a whole, as a society.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on forward.
Hey, my name's Greg Peterson. I live at, I live two houses to the bust. That silver roof there, you see. Let's see, I have some concerns. If you, you look, you can't see here, but right along the, I've got six apartment complexes to the east. So I know what it's like to live next to apartments. There's a lot of traffic that comes right down that street right there. To add another apartment complex with six more units is going to make that more busy, that street. So in addition, when school is starting and ending, there's a lot of traffic up and down that street with parents coming to and from school. Kids walking to school. I've actually seen two kids, you know, in two different parks, because of the traffic and so that. So I think, I think my concern is two things. I like the fact that it's potentially owner occupancy. I think that helps build ownership in a community that's better. So I've, I've got two concerns. The first one is the traffic and the safety. And also, I, I don't like the overhead power lines. I've got a power line that runs right down my property line. And about halfway through my backyard, I've got lines that branch out to every single apartment complex. And my question is, where would those apartments, where would the power from that apartments come from? I hope they're not tapping off my power pole that's right next to my property in the middle of my backyard. And it's, it's so bad, I can even throw a football in my backyard with my kids and the power line. So I don't like that. Anyway, those are my concerns. Anyway, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Could I address his concern with power?
Sure. That'd be fine.
I would just mention, I mean, I can't say anything as what we would do with his power. But with the PRUD, we have the ability to put in the agreement that we'd put the power underground. And we certainly would be amenable to doing that. We want to be a good neighbor and present a project that's going to be attractive to the neighbors around. So if that makes him feel better, we would do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to address us tonight?
I guess one other concern is, I've looked at the area right there, it really doesn't seem that big. I mean, it's I mean, the, where the apartment complexes to the west of my, or to the, in between my house and the apartment, the house. I think that lot is about 0.75 acres. And those apartments seem pretty crammed in there with parking. I think my lot used to be a half acre. I think somebody sold it off to the apartment complexes. And so my acre is a quarter of the acre. So when I look at the apartments to the, to the west, you've got six units plus a parking stall, and it feels tight in there. And then, you know, to add more apartments to the east, which is further, it just feels cramped in there.
All right. Seeing nobody else here to address us tonight, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Again, we acknowledge the emailed and submitted comments to the city that we've all received. And now the interview is part of that record. And we just might note that most of those comments were not in favor of this rezonant and had a variety of reasons as to why they were not in favor. All right, let's turn back to the applicant, Mr. Larson, to see if he has any, anything he would like to add.
Well, just to address some of the concerns and issues that were brought forth, like my brother mentioned, you know, with the PRUD, that's kind of discussing with Kaysville city staff. We want to address those issues. Kind of a big thing of why we're doing it, as mentioned earlier, but economic feasibility is an important part of it. But also, I mean, if we look at what's going on in our state, we have, we have a housing crisis. There's not enough homes. There's not enough land to put homes on. And so we're of the opinion that we need to get a little bit more creative and want to work and be good neighbors to everyone. But we also want to make sure that all the people who want to come here and be here and live here and be a part of this community can have that opportunity. And when you're talking $700,000, $800,000, single-family homes, living in the middle of Kaysville, there's just not a lot of opportunity there. And so that's, you know, that's one of the, one of our big reasoning, our thoughts and reasoning for the public. As far as, you know, addressing any of those, any of those concerns about traffic and safety, you know, we'll work closely with, with the staff to institute anything that they feel is appropriate to make sure that, you know, people can get in and out. The egress is appropriate, that the fire life and safety can get in there for whatever reason. We were talking about that earlier. And so we're flexible. We, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We want to, you know, set something, set something up for the community that will help the community. And we understand that the change is hard. You know, like Jason mentioned, that used to be a horse pasture, and now it's kind of a fallow field. And we don't think it's particularly beneficial to the neighborhood, and we'd like to put something that is. So we just hope that the commission and the council and the city would like to move forward with similar goals. And then I think that that's about all I have. Any questions for me?
Any other questions?
What's your price point that you're thinking about for these homes?
So they'd probably be in 280, 300. I mean, obviously, this project's a couple of years down the road. And with what the housing market's doing, it's kind of crazy. But that would be the general price point. They'd be, you know, but they are, they are homes. So when, when apartments get mentioned, I mean, they're townhomes. There, you know, there's the possibility that we, that we keep them and that they do active rentals. But we're talking 1,600 square foot townhomes with two-car garages. We're not talking fourplexes here that are lower quality housing. Maybe these will, these will be nice. Lyle mentioned another project we did behind the post office. They'll be very similar to that. He also mentioned a couple of things in the PRUD that maybe the neighbors would find attractive. You know, we've mentioned that we're willing to fence the entire property with a masonry fence. So it will, it'll be nice, it'll look good. We'll put in good landscaping, nice trees, keep it up. So it would, it would change the aesthetic of the neighborhood.
Any other questions?
I've just got a few comments.
You want to do that now or when we discuss?
Let's do it when we discuss.
It smells good. Any other questions for Mr. Larson? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, let's bring the discussion here to us and see where we stand, what we think with this. Scott, one.
Okay, so I've done a lot of thinking on this and I've actually had a chance to speak personally with a couple of the people who reached out, Rob Danzy, and I had a conversation today. I don't know if you texted and didn't know anybody else.
Most of us.
He and I chatted a little bit and, you know, I understand that the growth means that the region is under. I understand that if this type of density doesn't go here, it goes somewhere else. And, you know, we don't need to take residents that want to live in Kaysville and put them in Layton because Layton's the place that you put multifamily housing. Clearfield, as far away as we can. And also that, you know, multifamily doesn't mean low income and multifamily doesn't mean afford. These would be, like you said, three-bedroom, two-car garage attainable. Yeah, and these are even on that range of attainable. I mean, I think about my wife and I, we lived in a townhome, our first single-family home was a three-bedroom, tiny little house that was smaller than these. And these wouldn't have been attainable at that time. So I think about who can, you know, who's going to buy a $300,000 townhome and
Let me tell you, today's market, that's below.
It is. And the other thing is that it's our kids, you know? I have them two at a time, right? Twins, and so we're all, you know? So I am, I'm all about figuring out that mixed housing and that price point housing, especially in our neighborhoods where it makes sense and it turns over a piece of property. This, this does feel a little bit to me like it's, it's going one past the, sort of the densest thing in the neighborhood. So it's like, it's passing beyond the two-car garage, two-family dwellings that sit in a single box, one, two, three, next to it. You've got a two-family dwelling to the east of it. As you, as you pan around the neighborhood, there's a handful of those types of developments where it's like two-Z homes, fewer that are like the three and four. So if you go just south, there's another, another south and west, there's another development similar to this on Google Earth. The development that went in northeast, the other RM piece is another one that's kind of similar makeup, but sort of one density level less. So I, but my fear is, is if we say build four units, then they're going to make them four-bedroom or granite quartz countertop and make them 375. And basically, like, it won't change the bottom line, it'll just up the product price because you guys know what it costs to develop this property and want to get what you need to get out of a piece of property to develop it. So I guess I'm battling between like six mostly attainable units or four that are either going to or not going to meet your needs and might just bump up the product. And then the other thing just about, about pieces like this, it's a huge challenge is that while they open space, might meet the letter of the law of providing 6,000 square feet of open space, it's an eight-foot strip and two 14-foot strips. Like, it's not, it's not a top lot. It's not, you know, talk about throwing a football, like you better be able to throw a football straight and to use it, masonry fence or not. And that's, you know what, it's one of those, it needs code and on paper it needs, but the practical reality is that that is not providing open space. It's really usable for, for the neighborhood on any sort of, you know, basis. And that's part of why we're asked of Hammerhead. And then my last gripe about private streets and private street development is the lack of sidewalks. And so you've got 12 cars, you know, probably likely coming in and out of that area. Kids walking to school, it's certainly walkable. You've got schools, parks, churches, the theater, you know, ice cream shop, all the stuff that's walkable to this. And you're having, you know, kids walk up 100-foot private drive on the driveway, which is fine. You'd hope people are driving slow and paying attention. But I always think that the added addition, even up on the side of a wall curve as a four-foot sidewalk would be benefiting, you know, walkability and accessibility in the neighborhood. But that's just a personal issue of mine with private, private driving development. So on its face, I think that it, you know, to me, it meets the neighborhood. I can totally appreciate what was happening 20 years ago with the neighbors and them seeing what, what at that time was lots of turnover. But, you know, the realities of the growth pressures in Utah and that it's honestly, it's our own growth pressures. It's not like a bunch of people are moving in from California to live in these homes. Like, these are, these are people who want their kids and grandkids to be able to live in the community that they grew up in. And we need to provide housing for those people.
So it sounds like you're giving the concept, there's some details you have to go with about.
I like it that, I mean, I've been seeing through housing for attainable housing meetings recently. And a lot of this is, we need more product like this. It's just how do we get there? There's a formula to it. You've got the cost of land, the cost of infrastructure, you need to go into it. The product overall needs a lot of what we need in the city. I lived in a home like this in our first, in my first, when we were married. This is, it's not unusual, same type of thing as when we were, area that we developed.
I've got a comment. I have a lot of this type of approach. And this developer has done some quality properties that we've seen. And this will be another one. And we don't have enough affordable housing. We've all got kids and grandkids that want to live around us. And where are they going to be able to afford to live if we don't have some developments like this? The neighborhood has some multi-use, higher-density housing, so it fits into the character of that. The price point in Utah for an average home is about $350,000. They're going to be below that. And you get 50% of the citizens that can't even quite get to the average. So we need these types of developments or we don't have people that can afford it. And so I talk this approach and I'm very supportive.
Just something I mentioned, I'm right in the middle of something like this right now. This might be interesting. Do you know how many houses are sold right now in Kingsville? 400,000 or less.
Not now?
Two, two. They have, one's been on the market for three days. It has one, it's under contract with four backup offers. The other one has three backup offers and it's been on the, it's been on the market for six days. There's a huge, I mean, 400, 500,000 isn't the average house in Kingsville. The average house, I know in new construction, you're, you're $700,000, $800,000, $900,000. That's just what it is. And there is such a demand for this. And we'll talk about other things tonight as well about that. But I think that we need to be wise how we redevelop land and everything else. But I think that an approach to scatter this out through the community and not just provide one area. Like, for example, today, I worked on an area that's over 180 units in one area. Well, that, not only is that hard on schools, it's hard on communities and everything else. But I think that this is the appropriate way to give an opportunity for people to move in. And first of all, 280 is cheap, I'm telling you. You're not going to do it for 280. Being a general contractor and knowing what costs are. You know, you know, I'm dealing right now, we're listing for 350,000 and it's only 1,400 square feet. It was built in 1961. That's what the market is right now. And so I think that, I think this is a wonderful thing in a lot of ways. If it's done right and, and quality, I think it's, it'll be good for Kaysville. And by the way, I live on a bottom road with no sidewalks in the other. I haven't had any kids grow up. Good and rare prices.
I just echo what Larry said. We just had some folks in our neighborhood that decided they needed a bigger house for their family. So they decided they wanted to sell their house, probably, I would say around $4,000, maybe right around there. They decided that they maybe just see how, might go, have a realtor, just just to like, come and put a sign up. They can get a sign up. First day, they had three. House was gone. Could even get a sign up pretty much.
Kingsville's, we left affordable housing several years ago. This is a very desirable community. And, you know, we want to keep this as a desirable, desirable community. And I don't think that there's any one that wants us to enter some of the places of Roy and some of these other areas and put just a ton of housing. But I think we need to be wise on how we, we do that. We just don't want to have, we don't want to turn it into a San Francisco, just have an elite community and only millionaires can live in it. So that's a concern.
I think the only comment I would add is that I'm like Scott, like kind of torn hearing the comments from the, you know, the neighbors about their concerns about density, higher density in this area versus affordable housing. Because I definitely, like everyone else, I think we need more affordable housing that our kids can come, so they can live here. So I guess the only thing I would add is like the, the only thing that would make this a slam dunk for me if it was on a major road, if it was on Kinder North or Main Street, I'd be like, I'd be like all in on this. I think that's the only thing that concerns me is that, does this meet the vision and the general plan? You know, having this higher density, is it on like a major road? So that would be the only thing that maybe I would, only thing that maybe hesitate. Otherwise, I think the cost is great.
You know, I think
Got it?
Like this are, they are, they're in, they're in transition. They're changing. They were developed back in, they, many of these properties were quite large. Half-acre or more and in the market. It's just tough. It's tough to do a house that's going to sell for any kind of decent price and then to be in an older neighborhood. It's tough to build a house in that price range, you know, at that rate. So these neighborhoods are transitioning. And I think for all the reasons that all of you stated, I think it makes sense to do, I'd be worried a little bit as well, you mentioned, what's the impact on the neighborhood? Like with traffic and some other things like that. But I guess those kinds of things, particularly when you look at this, I don't think it's enough of an impact to really cause it to be overwhelming. Yeah, it would be more. But I don't think it's going to be overwhelming anymore. So it's something that I think that could be accommodated. So from that standpoint, I think, you know, it makes some sense.
And it's just one block off.
This is Quan, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Quan.
So I like the project as it stands. I do believe that it does meet our needs regarding general plan, SB 34. Is it perfect? No. Is it perfect? No. Yes, we would love it if it were spread out throughout. Both west and east Caseville, having said that, I'm pragmatic, this is what we have. The, the developer, again, has another project that we've seen, and it's a good project. I like that the, the developer is willing to work with the neighbors, whether it's a fence, which I would highly recommend. I, I'd be definitely supportive of that, and then also be underground power to address the, the other neighbors' concern, so. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion or entertain a motion from any of the, the commissioners, so we can move this forward.
Any other discussion amongst commissioners here before we maybe move on?
This, this might be minor, but do we have at this point the need for a little sort of letter from our sewer district who has expressed concerns about. Now, more into larger projects on the west side of I-15 that are probably on a different type of system, but. Just knowing this is old infrastructure, is there, are there any concerns about what was one now being seven?
We had this conversation in the office.
Well, and Lyle, when I met with the sewer district folks last week.
When I'm hearing everything on the east side. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we had this conversation regarding through highs today. They basically said everything in the east freeway, you can do, they have the infrastructure for it, I think out west is where they have more.
Well, the issues out west are more to line capacity.
It's line capacity.
They don't seem to have as, as much concern with that, they have a couple of major crossings across I-15. They don't, they think that's okay, but of course they did say if you start adding a lot of density to the east, that may mean. We would have to look at doing another line across I-15 sometime, but it sounds like right now that's not a big issue. Am I right about that one?
Yeah, I think those are both the same frame of thinking, which I understand as well is. The plant itself has capacity, the problems we've encountered, the pump stations and line capacity on the west side. And. It's those I-15 crossings that, that impact concern with it, there's a concern of, you know, it's out. What it's at this point, if it does belong, absolutely have to have the board final plating and stuff to go through, so. We can make sure we get it whenever earlier needed or whatever, which I can't remember on the process.
All right, yeah, just a question, so this is on slab then?
Yeah.
That's good, I, I've owned like six loss grid when we built, I'm telling you, the sewer lines are only three or four feet from ground. Always pop a manhole cover.
How to look?
Yeah, the old CCC. Yeah, they were, they were hand dug. Yeah, and I think what they reported, what was happening were two different. Yeah.
Work Projects Administration.
Yeah, whatever, you know, but. Pretty fun.
Any other discussion by the commission? Are we ready to take some action on this? Not like Quan was ready to make a comment.
I am, so let me attempt, we're dealing with two issues here, right? Refresh my memory.
Yeah, the first one we're doing is the rezon, so that's the, that would be the zone change with the PRUB. And then the development agreement that would go along with that condition specified that Lyle had to talk about. The, the one thing that we had talked about and maybe adding to that was undergrounding the power lines.
Yeah. And the fence.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's about, that's it, Quan.
Okay, so my motion would be for both or just one at a time?
Let's do one, let's do the rezon first.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve. The rezon approximately 0.425 acres of property at 263 East 100 North from. RD Residential Diverse to RM Multi-Family Residential Zoning District to include. The suggestion of the underground power and also the fencing around the property.
As part of the development reason? And that would be, just to, just to reiterate, that's a recommendation we would be making to the city council.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Jared has seconded that motion. Any other discussions of the motion? All right, then I think we're ready for a vote, Larry, I think it's to you. Very votes, aye, Toby?
Aye.
Toby's aye.
Aye.
Scott, Quan?
Aye.
Quan's aye, Jared?
Aye.
Yeah, I vote aye.
Aye.
And Steve votes aye, so that motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're to the preliminary plat. Lyle, was there, was there anything in the preliminary plat that we need to know particularly, or we have the preliminary plat as presented here?
So, with the preliminary plat. I can zoom in much. I get a development agreement that you're going to go as close as they are to the private street. So with that, they have standard 15 foot setbacks to the north and south, which in this case is the left and right of the screen. They've got a paint portal, which is a standard side yard to the east or the bottom of the screen here. The Hammerhead style is looked at as appears to be appropriate, we have to check the radio and a couple things with the final plat, just to ensure those details. But otherwise, it's on a, it's up to see here, I think it's a 24 foot private, which is. We see installed, so. Our purview from staff at the preliminary level is it's meeting, if it comes open space areas with the zone. Development agreement would need setbacks, it's difficult, and the private street turnaround and access function, I've heard they all counted for.
Okay, so we heard the, the specifics for the preliminary plat. Is there a motion on the preliminary plat?
I, I just had, my last question is on any, there's no visitor or guest parking at all in this, so. You know, it's 24 feet wide, that's, that might be wide enough to drive around parking if you run it up the west side. It also, that Hammerhead might be deep enough, if you can take 21-ish feet, nine by 21 or nine by 20 for parking space, depending on the review. To dump, you can do two parking spaces at the end, three if you, you know, change slightly and you have the landscaping there, you know, tucked one in, but. That, that's just another concern of mine. Got six homes here, parking whatever that happens is all in the outer street. In this case, unless you make accommodations in that, either the development agreement or the. Covenant restrictions or how it's deeded to these folks that they can park. Eight feet wide on the west side, they don't have a 16 foot drive ingress, but then again, that might not mean fire. For 16 feet wide. Yeah, maybe 16 feet wide enough, if they had parking hall, I mean, it'd be impractical or unrealistic, but. The car's just lined, that whole thing, you know, the firefighters are going to think of the worst case scenario.
Yeah, that would be.
But having, you know, even if it were marked down, I don't know. One unit per of this, just painted on the ground, so two up there and then four along it, you'd have. Parking per 80-ish feet of the private street on the northwest direction, and then two that would just park straight in at the end. It seems like it could be easily accommodated.
So you were, you, you're thinking of just specifying the preliminary plat that. That there'd be some consideration, or that that be designated as visitor parking or potential visitor parking?
We're just brought up as a, as an approval of the preliminary plat with the consideration for, you know, before it comes back to final. Designing in a way that each unit has one guest parking, not to be deeded to the property for like permanent parking, but just to be.
Just to show where that parking is.
Potential guest park.
Okay.
And you, you, if you, if, I don't know how your other, I was not the prime commission when the other development went in, so if it's similar or dissimilar, but. Was there dedicated onsite visitor parking in that one?
Yes, there, there is in that one, there's, there's, you know, same visitor parking, it's the bigger private street. And we, we will definitely explore that. Kind of the reason that we have it drawn this way is just fire. But, you know, if, if the, if the fire chief's good with it and everything, that's anything to do, that makes it more attractive property for everyone. So we, we'll definitely explore that.
All right, you want to ready to make a motion?
With that, I would make a motion. And make a motion to approve, approve the preliminary plat, 263 East 100 North. With the addition to, prior to coming back to final plat. Of course, all city requirements for water sewer gutter drainage, grounding power, showing utilities, and then. Show and consider location for one unit of visitor parking per. Home developed on the site. Six, six parking stalls.
Steve seconds that motion, any other discussion by the commission? We get our vote, Toby?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Quan?
Aye.
Eric, aye. I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously, so we're recommending approval of the preliminary plat as submitted and as indicated by staff and with the recommendations Scott has made. Consideration for the visitor parking. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate all of you being here for this. Lyle, do you know when this might be going before the city council?
It could be next week, I think, with considering some of those items, the downtown council will hopefully know how they're in, see if we're ready, otherwise it would be.
Three weeks. So we read the question for the 20th. So you're one week or three weeks?
What's on the recommendations, and I think because of, I think there's a temporary, we're just going to do that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our final item of business on the agenda for tonight is the final plat for the Galbraith. Caseville Flaglot subdivision located at 1599 West Galbraith Lane. The owner is, the applicant is Nathan Albee. And as, just as a reminder, as you all know, final plats are generally a formality. We just checked to make sure that all of the requirements that were stipulated in the preliminary plat have been addressed, and then we. Move forward with an approval on that, it does not go back to the city council with, with final orders on that, so. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just to remind you where the property's at on the south side of Galbraith Lane, towards the west side of town. The property owner, we met on this a couple times, maybe four or five months, and then. Realized that they'd prefer to have a little bit bigger building area in the back, so they actually changed the zone, came back again. But it's almost approved at the arm of the plane. A lot for the existing home on Front Lot, we had 20,000 square foot lot, a slightly larger lot. Flag lot to the rear, but we'd modify the existing home subs to meet the setback requirements, so. It's demolition proportion of the property to get any filter requirement, along with the 30 foot. Flag set required to access the new lot, and this shows some of the preliminary plat that the commission looked at, and went through that process. And final plat here, so to limit that, lot sizes and everything are in order, and we'll go through that process. And comply with what is expected of staff. When we discussed this with the commission, there was a recommendation for, for preliminary, like, fencing along the south side. Between neighboring homes requirement, and then also that the. I believe the commission recommendation was to push the stormwater down the street. When it went to the city council, the city council, in their final action on that preliminary plat consideration. Decided that fencing would not be a requirement, that they'd be built between neighbors. And they left it open to the developer, as long as they met to the satisfaction of the city engineer, design of a stormwater system, they could do. Whatever option they pursued. Our public works director actually at that meeting said, you know, hey, we've got some sort of pipe. Let's work together with the applicant and perhaps with the city, we can help go with the Cadillac options we were calling in. To actually push the stormwater, after a stormwater system. That's the design that they provided for us, both reviews.
Director of the Frenchy to Apple Street.
And, you know, and so I actually met with the applicant, this year, and our public works director on site, looking at our pipe and options today. And we're working on to see if we can get that collaboration taken care of, with the understanding, and it sounds like it's, it's making sense, but it doesn't, and there are other options, again, the council, I'm doing. For design on that engineering. But in showing that, they showed the demolition here, this shows captured that system and pipe of our stormwater system in Galbraith Lane. Certainly take care of the water on, on the site, and it'll be sized such that show other type issues in the future. That they could, potentially tie in, if they did sort of their own. So with that, steps recommendation of it's consistent with the zoning preliminary plat. And it's made of provisions of the council that's, was requested through the preliminary process. And we recommend approval at this point, council has, or commission, I think, just received some comments. From neighbor, there's just some conservative agreements, fencing, there's still concern, and I'm sure the water. Be an issue in the future, but that is, that will, so I believe you received those comments, I don't know if you have a chance to read. With that, the applicants here, if there are questions of him or myself, I'd be happy to continue the discussion.
Thank you, Lyle. We did receive some comments on the final plat. So I had to deal with water again, and as Lyle has indicated, the council discussed that with the city public works director pretty detailed. And I think they, they made the determination to go ahead and approve it with the, the. Recommendations being made by the public works director on how to handle the water. And they felt that that would be sufficient to, to deal with the water issue. So from that standpoint, council went ahead and approved the preliminary plat, and the final plat reflects that. That they will be addressing the water per the recommendations of the city public works director. The other issue that was brought up was regarding fencing. And as we, as the planning commissioner made the recommendation, and then I think as the council affirmed that, that this is not a normal requirement. In subdivision plats, and so therefore they do not stipulate that every fencing. Established as a neighbor had requested, but the neighbor has indicated that they think that there was an airmate. And that there have been other subdivisions, or at least one other subdivision in the city that did require fencing, or was not necessarily required. So my question to you is, again, I think we, whether that was done or not is really rather irrelevant. The question really is, is it required by the ordinance? And it's clear that it is not required by the ordinance. So it's really, any, any comments or discussion about that condition as I'm watching for the requirement in that comment? Okay. Any other questions? Comments about this final plat as presented to us?
You meant onsite today, so the neighbors aren't privy to the information that the city, the applicant are working together to do the best option.
For the water.
Do you think, you know, is that something that could be communicated back to any of the neighbors? Once that resolution is made, or is it just, you know, you hope that they attend to the council, but. I just would love, I would love for the neighbors to know that, that the city's on board, that the applicant is on board, that the thing that. Is hopefully going to solve what was my main issue on this is household water, water impacts. Will actually hopefully be solved by this flag lot rather than leaving it an open back area.
Been collecting a lot for years.
Yeah.
I think what we could do, Scott, is just pass on the recommendation to staff, maybe have Lyle pass that on, that we would, we would encourage. That, uh, we would, we would encourage the communication with the neighbors as to what the resolution, the water issue is.
Yeah, that'd be great. And that they can tie into the, the new lot.
Yeah.
Some of them sound like they have their own problem, their own problem.
Yeah, that's right.
That's a huge bonus.
And we've, we've not, uh, knocking door to door on the, the design is, but included with the package is this that shows the system out to this man on the street and then it would then staff where talks about getting piped out. So the public information is obviously this is the direction that's being considered and, uh, whether or not they've read those details and picked up on that.
No, that's.
We could tell them where this, this is your direction.
That's great. I just, I really appreciate staff taking that, you know, seriously and having had it and spending their time going out on site. I think that's, it sounds like a great solution.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve the final plat for the Gilbertth Caseville subdivision located at fifteen ninety-nine West Gilbert Lane for Nathan Avery. And in accordance with all of the staff recommendations and, uh, the city engineers' recommendation.
Full second done.
Second by, oh, yeah, he has it. It was, I wasn't, I just heard the voice come, but I wasn't watching. All right. Any comments or any, uh, discussion of that motion from the commission? All right. And let's go ahead and go. Scott?
Aye.
Uh, Juan?
Aye.
Chair? Aye. My vote, aye. Steve? Larry and Toby?
Aye.
All right. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks very much. That preliminary plat is approved. That, I believe, is the end of our business items for this evening. Well, let's know we, uh, I'm not.
Are you Nathan?
This is Nathan.
Oh, you're, oh, okay.
Uh, I mean, we're done with the item, but if there's anything you want to just bring up to us? We're good?
Set up your own.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. When I said business items, I mean, for the applicants generally, not that we don't count you as an applicant. Lyle does have a number of items on the agenda for ordinance amendments, so we'll check the time we're in now.
Uh, we're right, very nine o'clock, so very fast. We've talked about these, but if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask them. Uh, we discussed, uh, previously, um, regarding sake in your intersections. Just the start and some moving improvements over writing and vegetation, just eliminating treats from those clear corners thirty feet for corner management property line. So the horn is a bigger package. Simply adds, uh, clearly within that, it said before, no obstruction between three and ten feet. And we, the staff, we've administered that for years and kind of, hey, what's that mean? It's a pole obstruction, it's a tree trunk obstruction. Mature tree, maybe not. A new and growing tree, sure. I'm sorry, I didn't have it. It's hard to see around. So we just added the planting of new trees shall be prohibited in this strange newer area. And then I just, uh, included here with the presentation, um, in terms of, um, work on this, uh, the direction of the commission, but they got a kind of handout. So again, a lot of people want to look around what they can do with the park strips. I just got a little one major you can do for small, medium and large strips. Um, wanting to run, run the, my way of ordinance demanding certain species of trees and try to, uh, regulate that.
We're not going to, we're not going to be broke.
Not yet. So with that, that's just a one liner, uh, for recommendation passed on to the council and this ordinance. There's an error much there.
Uh, we, we haven't had public hearing since we've here, right?
Uh, it's been notified, listed as public hearing, so we can do that this evening.
Have they, has it been notified for all of the ordinance changes that we have here?
Yes.
Why do we have to go through all of them and then we'll see if there's anyone else in public here that wishes to comment on that.
Uh, yeah, so the next item, um, is again, we discussed it, uh, this is probably the question we just wanted to come up with, I think, a little bit too tonight on housing affordability. Our accessory dwelling units, uh, the ordinance that's written, uh, we discussed it, um, hopefully we made the correct adjustments. Uh, but essentially allows for, uh, additional accessory dwelling within the main dwelling structure. But also as a detached, uh, within the corrupt detached garage, pool house, those types of things could use for a dwelling purpose. Essentially the difference between what's in here and the last time we discussed it, we, um, opened it up a little more rather than restricted some sort of footage concerns, uh, I think some of the big ones, uh, parking amendments along there, but we tried to reduce, take out. Uh, what it states on it is they would be on the same utility connection and, um, it's the main house, made up of the same tax ID.
And that's what we're.
That's affordability, okay.
We took out the percentage, uh, question within the dwelling. Uh, there are a lot of minutes to listen to and I don't know if I caught everything, so we can take a look at it and see if we're there. But hopefully that's what accomplishes is the legalization of running out of basement or space above your garage and, um.
I, I, I think a lot of this is already going on.
Oh.
I mean, let's, let's.
You know, and that's true in all areas.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I know, uh, just behind Hill Farms, uh, I hear this because our administrative system talks about it. There's two homes that modified their, modified their, their basements recently, the last eighteen months. They're already doing this and so.
Yes, both of Hill Farms, uh, auto homes have separate entrances and full basements and, uh, hook, full kitchens in the basement. So it's like, oh, well, okay, that, that's, I mean, it's.
And so I mean, I just.
Hey, what could you do with that?
Let's, 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 let's encapsulate what people are doing and maybe so we can do it.
Yeah, I totally agree. You know, I, it's interesting to me that we haven't, I, I really haven't seen a lot of pushback on this. And I don't know.
We here in our office is support.
Yeah.
Um, I know there's, the council, we'll see what they have to say. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll see it now.
With some of the impact that it could have, if, if we were to take, take advantage of it.
I know when we proposed this to Salt Lake City several years ago and Salt Lake's doing it again, making some changes. A lot of pushback. And then I just saw where Ogden is proposing this in Southeast Ogden and they're getting some pushback there. Uh, on it, but, uh, I don't know. I'm kind of gratified to see that we haven't gotten a lot of pushback, but then again, we'll see what happens when this goes to the council.
Well, you know, the extreme example is like Minneapolis, how lots legal families own.
Yeah.
So they wrote it completely out of their ordinance. Um, Portland has long had a two-family dwellings on that. Any, any home that's torn down and rebuilt always has a garage apartment or a hookup score, tiny home or second house in the back. Um, and those are areas where they're trying to catch up, I think, with, with housing affordability, with just a provision of housing that in general. Uh, I'm, I'm really excited about this to just see what happens with it over the next decade of home, new homes that are built with these provisions and, um.
It's a great thing.
It's a, it's a.
Or homes, or homes that get remodeled.
And I, and I don't know how, I don't know how you encourage this, but I, I would encourage the mayor, city council to let the legislators know that they're acting on SB thirty-four. Now, the more active the cities are on, on doing modern income housing planning and implementing it on a short timeframe, I think will reduce future, uh, sticks coming down from the legislature and maybe provide some more parents or that it will at least show that. You know, they're, they're trying, but, uh, you know, if she has a, she has any relationship with any of the legislators, I would, you know, express to the mayor to just say, hey, you know, our city's doing this and this is an ordinance we passed in, in a relatively quick, you know, short amount of time, I think. So.
But this ordinance override HOA rules, CCRs.
No.
No. No, it cannot override.
No, because they have the.
Well, your CCR, CCRs are a contract you sign with the seller of your property. So it's up to that HOA to unravel it now. Your recourse is that they'll find you and then put a lien on your house. And when you sell it, you can clear that lien. So legally, the city won't get in front of you of doing, uh, it's like two-family dwelling or ADU, but the HOA can certainly sue you if they want to.
Yeah.
Which I, I know that because I, I know, it's fantastic.
Okay, Lyle?
Thanks. We're, we're glad you think it's been short covered. The council member page only started well, or the council, official page.
Anything in city, in the city planning that happens unless the market here is just like the past.
But the, the last one, uh, seventeen thirty-one-two is one we've not discussed as much. We have discussed it, so inside our quick, keep helpful with this one. Uh, but it deals with two components. You have relocation of accessory dwellings or, excuse me, accessory structures, uh, which we have discussed. And I think combines that middle ground, the corner lots, not based on the front yard, leaving the side yards cleared. Um, appropriate flexibility in the backyard. Somebody has a dumb frontage lot with the street against their backyard. Um, yeah, I think those are the main things. If you have a, there was language in there. If you have a covered patio, essentially, the, the garage or detached building could approach past that in certain situations. Uh, that's what we've been bumping into quite a bit. Um, where it's still back behind the main portion of the house or, um, who's up tonight, you know, certain neighborhoods, they have these elf-shaped cones to kind of create a courtyard. And they have these big open areas on one side of the lot or in the above that puts, uh, uh, closer to the center of the lot rather than the part back. So it just gives that option. Um, and then the other piece of it is the building height. Um, what this is showing, so we had about four years ago changed it to a home building envelope where everything has to fit under this imaginary forty-five degree angle, uh, you know, vertical from the property line. Uh, we've had, uh, a number of people not love that. It, it allows for a higher wall, uh, wall height closer to the property line, but it forces your roof line to be modified. You can't have a standard gable that close to the property line in most cases. So you'll have standard gable from the street to the garage shore. You have a hip roof typically towards the back to deal with the slopes. Uh, in case your sun off, uh, definitely the bus or whatever was in particular about, that's kind of silly to force the architecture. Um, it doesn't necessarily change some of these sideline. It might add a little more sunlight, uh, to the backyard, but the height is extremely similar, um, because we measure height of a typical basis to the midpoint of the roof. Um, and so you could technically have a taller structure under the proposed rules or pre, or original rules, uh, than what we accomplished when we put it in building envelope. And the proposal is essentially to go back to that. Um, so whether it, uh, if there are questions on that one, um, let me know. We can discuss that. If you're ready to move on it, we'll certainly do that. But for many, many of you, that's how we allow people to consider the height of other buildings. It's a little less, uh, well, it's more flexible in the city architecture.
Yeah.
There's usually some interest in that.
Sure.
If, if the commission's interested, uh, you know, to adjust something, he could talk us a little bit more. Again, the primary reason we changed it was to give property owners more flexibility on that initial wall height. So the current ordinance is twelve feet in total height with, maybe it's fifteen, I don't know what it is. Within the first five feet. I think it's a good two. Section seven. So I think it's fifteen feet within the first five feet is what we measure the height at. Uh, but again, that's measured with the midpoint of the roof. So, uh, what came to us timing in was everyone with their RVs, uh, taller vehicle, uh, recreation vehicles. Fourteen foot wall was necessary almost every time at that. And so to be fifteen feet, you typically had a twelve foot high wall with the roof pitch above that heading to about eighteen, midpoint being fifteen. You could only get a twelve foot tall wall, but it wasn't enough, um, until you scooped that building further away, at which point you had to do a thirty-point turn to get your camper into the shed. So it led to a little bit taller close to the property line and that's why we trimmed the roof line. We gave a little bit, took a little bit. This goes back to that same problem, the way it's written. So if, if it's the commission stuff, that maybe fourteen feet is the measure number rather than twelve within the first five feet and then it steps up past that. Um, but again, that would be measured to the midpoint roof. I think that would probably better accomplish where current reality is in construction and how people are using things. Uh, but no, that is different than it's written. I just simply threw in the original language, but then it reflects. So I think that's all of my comments on the three ordinance that before you, uh, and if it knows is public hearing.
So it has been noticed. So with that, let's open the public hearing. Anyone here who would like to comment? Steve, no one go close to public hearing. Mr. Chair, what's your pleasure? Do you, uh, have some questions? Do you want some additional discussion about this? Or are you ready to move on these ordinance?
I'd really like those pinned down.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Well, if that's the case, is someone willing to get a motion? It's all for you.
All for you though? To approve ordinance amendments, you just get to the top. Uh, recommend for approval and ordinance amending seventeen thirty-one eighteen to refine clear view requirements for corner laws prohibiting planting trees. Recommend for approval and ordinance creating section seventeen thirty-one three accessory dwelling units and amend multiple chapters of title seventeen, finding zoning to designate where accessory dwelling units may be considered. And, and recommend for approval and ordinance amending seventeen thirty-one two accessory buildings of title seventeen, finding zone.
All right. Second by Larry. Um, any other discussion to that motion? All right. Hearing none. Let's, uh, go ahead and quote, quote Juan. Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on.
To my question of the building height, would you like to make the modification to fourteen rather than twelve or as?
All right.
Does it now?
I'm sorry.
And you're fifteen?
Fifteen is what it says. So maybe seventeen would be the right number, which is the last.
Okay. So you're saying fifteen is the midpoint and that's roof and that's what was forcing the twelve foot wall?
Yes.
Yeah, seventeen. That's enough.
Okay, or we could simply look at how we accomplish, uh, the fourteen foot to the, to the council.
Yeah, I would, so I, so I would, with the amendment that, that we accommodate a fourteen foot tall wall in accessory buildings, um, pass stated by staff. Let you figure out the numbers.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, with that amendment. Juan, let's start with you.
Aye.
Chair? Aye. My vote, aye.
My vote, aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, this is Juan. I have a comment on that, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it, uh, I, I'm glad that those ordinances, uh, are getting passed. I mean, think about when we actually start talking about those and, uh, you know, that was pre-COVID. And, uh, it, it's just so appropriate right now, whether it's the ADUs, uh, or, um, you know, anything else. So, uh, I'm glad that it worked out.
Yeah, agreed. Thanks, Juan. Appreciate that. Okay, with that, a call to the public. No public here. And, uh, other matters. Lyle?
Um, while I'm flying out, Colonel Commissioner has some things he's hoping to share, so we'll all get that ready. Um, our building is close. I was hopeful of you there tonight. A little optimistic and assumptions never hurts, but.
I always say thirty days after COVID.
It's most likely will also be here on the twenty-seventh for this meeting.
We're really here again?
So they're furnishing it, they're wrapping up some things, but by the time they're eighteen, everything is in place on it.
What is going on with those guys?
They're turning it over to us at the end of the month. And so that's what we like. So. Yeah, watch, watch for the locations. Go just to ensure that. Um, and then, yeah, we are again two weeks from tonight. Bad, I don't remember meeting schedule. Um, I don't know that I've been on the further hundreds of correspondence to share unless there are others from the commission or I, or this.
Fall conference season is looking kind of, I don't know, we, uh, I don't, the league was supposed to have announced yesterday what they were going to do for their annual conference, but I didn't.
Uh, to, at four twenty-one PM.
Oh, what did they say?
They say annual convention is now coming to you September twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. They made it longer to make it shorter. It's, it's mostly, uh, a hundred percent Zoom, but there will be a few, uh, local cores that are in person. And the reason they made it longer is so that they could do a fewer, like, full days of just sitting in front of your computer doing Zoom sessions.
Uh, so make them shorter, shorter days.
Shorter days, but there's going to be more of them. I will, I will say that they're teaming up with APA Utah again, and then they're also teaming up with Los Angeles Regional Council to look at regional visioning and local planning resources. So I would encourage you on the go because I've been working directly on a bunch of stuff that.
Me too, I've worked on some, where I was working on some sessions for the conference. We'll have to see what happens.
I'm doing the homeless conference, the statewide homeless conference one year. And that's the same way with doing more days with water.
Well, what was interesting is with the league, you know, they represent two hundred and eighty seven or nine or something cities across the state. And a number of those are in green counties with very few COVID cases and very few COVID restrictions. So Karen Deal, the league director, was getting a lot of pressure to host an in-person meeting. You know, I think there were a lot of mayors and elected officials.
Too select to do it.
There is no, there's no issue in our community, so let's come together.
And the other issue, so we just heard this today down in, someone on statewide phones, network phone call. And we heard this down in Garford, had their county fair.
Well, Weber had a fair, Cass County fair.
And Washington County had their fair. And the Washington County Commission is no masks and very, very anti-COVID. And so so Garford County, and so the state health director, there's one state health director on our phone call and basically just said, we'll wait, we'll wait seven days and see what happens because we're anticipating.
Some spike.
A spike in COVID cases. Because Garfield, I think, has had seven cases total since March. They'd have very few, but Washington County's had a lot of the greater impact. And so it'll be interesting because they said that, like, almost the entire county came, the numbers were very impressive in Washington County. Everyone was there, everyone was together, there was not a lot of social distancing going on. So it'll be interesting because I think you're right, there's a lot of green, green cities, green counties throughout there. But I think the big issue is you start impacting those communities with people who are potentially infected.
Well, what this means, though, as far as the conference goes, is normally we have several conferences through the call, but the league and APA and Los Angeles, they're combined. So that's going to be one, and it'll be mostly online. I am on the Utah Land use Institute Board that has the land use law conference in October. Our board meeting is in a week. We're, there's been a pretty serious proposal made, a discussion saying to either defer it to spring or, or just not have one this year at all and go, wait till next fall to see what happens. So it'll be slimmer pickings this year for fall conferences instead of on train.
How it's supposed to be Denver next year? With HUD from Monday through Friday.
No football, no conferences. What are we going to do this fall?
We're going to be playing. We've got our fourth game today.
Protested riot.
Davis played tonight.
Yeah, his first game in the country.
Is your, last Tuesday, I went to.
Come on, Lyle, look at that. Darson and Aaron played tonight.
Last Tuesday, I went to the work session for apartments and city council and legislature. Representative County Commissioner Kamalu and Dave's community housing authority. They are putting together a work group for moderate housing plan for Farmington. So they already have eighty more that's had several things in place, but they are even want to be a little more aggressive in approaching their moderate housing plan. I'd like to see what comes out of that and talk with them. Plezier is their planning chair. His first name, Kushir Plezier, and he presented, he's running low income housing as well career is what he does. So I think it'd be interesting to see what comes forward from them. They want to work directly with the housing authority to see about bringing in low income housing tax credit type developments into the city and work that way. So it'd be interesting to see, they are our neighbor in the south. They have most apartments, I think, in the community and county right now. So just kind of keep a eye on that one. They are, they are moving that direction towards moderate housing plan more and more in line with the guidelines, rest of the report, adding more of those elements here.
Okay. Lyle, anything else?
I agree. Yeah, so I have one, I have one thing that I just wanted to bring up to the planning commission, and I won't make this long since it's twenty after nine, but one thing I noticed, while I have been watching happen on two hundred north, is it was re-struck to five lanes and for, you know, so you've got, what we had before, if you go back, these are in the same position essentially, if you look where the White House is. So we had a buffered bike lane, essentially from.
Oh, you're talking about west two hundred north?
This is two hundred north on the west side from I fifteen, from I fifteen to what would that be future West Davis corridor. And it was originally strike five lanes over the bridge to the Maverick right there. And then it was strike five lanes to Flint. And then the five lanes died to three lanes. So I'm talking one travel lane in each direction, the center turn lane. So this is what it did look like, and now this is what it looks like today. This is about two weeks ago, right after they took the orange barrels up. Sorry, my windshield's truly nasty dirty, but.
And now they've made the line here.
Yeah, so now the whole curve is painted red. But I just wanted to show you guys a little bit, you know, I did active transportation planning in this shareo is, I mean, it's a number of things, but the most is it's extremely unsafe, and it's also a huge disservice in the world that we're living in right at this moment. So that on the ground is, it's called a shareo. It's basically a share the road. It's to alert and notify cars that there may or may not be cyclists on the road. We can go to the next slide. So this is, this is general guidelines for how you design bike and pedestrian facilities. The left side being the number of vehicles of annual daily traffic. And then the, on the bottom there, it's miles per hour. So you can see that, you know, up to twenty five hundred, maybe three thousand cars and under twenty five miles an hour, you can do that shared lane. It's like a free for all on the road and safe. And even those, I think you need to have more friction on the street to make them safe. That's what we have right now on two hundred north. And then it goes up. The next recommended is a standard bike lane, which is a four foot wide bike lane on the other side of the white fog line for a car. It's really recommended at twenty five miles an hour and only up to about nine thousand cars. And then.
But what are you stressed with on two hundred north?
I'll tell you what it is. And then buffered bike lane beyond that. So it gets, really, the, the issue with two hundred north isn't the road volumes, it's the road speed. So if you go to the next slide.
Cause it's thirty five miles an hour.
Yeah, so it's thirty five miles an hour, but it's, you know, it's like arrow straight and it's flat, you know, sightline, you know.
People go way faster.
People, I will tell you that if I try to drag thirty down, I can just get tailgated. So this is, this is the projected traffic volumes to twenty fifty. So this is thirty years from now, right? Just to make this not a million slides. Essentially, ten thousand and nine thousand cars. And to give you a few marker points, this is Lake Park Way here from Angel to Flint. It's thirteen thousand projected and twenty one thousand up in this stretch. Both of these are three lane facilities with a buffered bike lane on them or a bicycle lane. So you can do, a three lane facility will function up to about twenty five thousand cars, annual daily traffic, and they begin to break down. So I would not recommend it be a three lane facility up over the bridge by I fifteen and totally break down, especially with the distancing of the stoplights there on, as you go up two hundred north. But this was, I mean, as a, as a citizen who lives on the west side, this was a, like a lazy decision. It's an easy decision. It was the frictionless decision of just like push a bunch of cars west. And if you go to the next slide, it's, this is the city's active transportation plan that the city participated in, paid for, had fifteen hundred participants of the community come out and tell us what they wanted. And that facility has been indicated, it's up top there as a shared use path, which would be basically what the Denver River Grand Rail Trail is, all the way from Flint to West Davis Corridor, and then a bike lane, regular bike lane across the rest of it, mostly because of constraints on the road. I mean, you'd have to purchase right of way to do this. But with, you know, we're not, we're not requiring developers to build the thing that we want. The five lane road is now essentially said, this is a private property ownership issue, like to ever get a ten foot shared use path above curb is never going to happen. There, there's opportunities for a few of the developments on the south side of that road to do this. You know, having twelve foot travel lanes and a fourteen foot center turn lane encourages people to drive fifty miles an hour. And you now have a road that's the same capacity as something like SR one twenty six Main Street out here, which has upwards of fifty five thousand cars, annual daily traffic in locations along it of fifty six hundred South and Roy and Main, right? Like, that's high, high traffic in that area, but that's the type of numbers that a five lane facility can take. So, you know, it's been done. It will get overlaid again. Every road gets touched every, you know, six to ten or twelve years, depending on the capital facilities plan. So there's opportunities to undo it, but even by twenty fifty, nine thousand cars is not enough to warrant that road. And you also, you know, in COVID time, I have a picture of being in cyclical showroom floor, there are no bikes, zero. My friend went in there and texted a picture and said, this is the inventory. There was nothing.
Nothing over.
And by presentation, you know, and our, what we're seeing on our bike counters regionally on Strava data, the app, phone app that tracks people is it's a hundred percent increase. And that's of people who are self-selected users of a phone app, a hundred percent increase. That's not taking into account families who just bought a bike and may have started riding around the neighborhoods. It's the only thing you can do. The exact standing trailhead is wall to wall people up and down it. So we've taken the jewel of, of shared use path, Denver River Grand, Grand, and we've now cut off its access on a major facility east and west. In fact, one of the only facilities in our community that connects it to future West Davis Corridor Trail, and we put the least safe, least genuine, like bicycle facility option on the road, which is a.
It's not a bicycle. It's not a bicycle anymore.
Three times just because of that road just coming here tonight. And there's been a pedestrian walking down on that side, coming in traffic on right on the gutter side, and you're having to get around. And then tonight, this morning, going to work, it was a woman with a dog walking into traffic on that side, you know, and she should have got killed. There was a truck coming off behind me, I didn't see her. And then this, this evening coming up, there's a kid, I mean, teenager trying to cross that because he realized he'd gotten in there where there was no sidewalk facility. And then the other day, going up to Smith's again, three kids walking up that road. I think people think because there was the bike facility there before, that there's, there's, there's an issue there of we, we created a facility now of, you know, like SR ninety three unintentionally without the constraints and without the capacity to expand upon it and build what we need.
And I, you know, I, I show this personally, it's like it upsets me, you know, then these are a bunch of, this is just other data. So now, you know, what we were showing is a region of existing bike features. That blue line right there is a buffered bike lane, where now we have to remove that. It like kills me a little to remove existing bike facilities off the map because they just wiped it off. This is what was regionally planned for the future bike network, and then I've got one on bike demand. This is a bike propensity map that essentially says like darker color is more, more people and connections and things, it's a better bike demand score. And then the network quality, which is your likelihood of riding generally, so green being comfortable for everybody, red being comfortable for only the most competent cyclists, and that's two hundred north as it's proposed with a bike lane. I mean, right now, it's not comfortable for anyone. I, I commuted for years, I'm an extremely confident cyclist. I used to pull my daughter from Havenwood on the west side of Hill Farms to Smith's pre-COVID, when you could go inside and source my one year old in the baby trailer. And I can't ride a baby trailer down the sidewalk without one wheel falling off one side. And so, you know, thinking about, I, I, that's cut off one, like, you know, a one mile fun trip that I used to do on a Friday when I, like, had time. It's, you know, the road decision killed that. And so I don't know at the city level, like, I wanted to send a letter to the mayor, I also wanted to just let the planning commission know, because I think our decisions here, when we make recommendations, implement or don't implement that bike plan. And, and we should at least do what we can to make recommendations, whether city council approves or doesn't approve it. But we really cut off a major east-west access to Denver River Grand Rail Trail that we could have been promoting.
Um, any insight, Lyle, into the thought process, not that we want to.
Traffic engineers.
In-house or in-store?
Uh, I think in-store. Based on accounts and things, that's, that's what our condition was. There's been public input from both sides as to whether or not they love the bike lanes or not. So they, I, I had my two cents in it.
Didn't prevail.
But we have a question internally, and then you saw with the Harvey property that James reported to the commission, that central path was, was on there. And so we all decided we're trying to get that path built, that's, that's miles in the goal. Prefer that over all scenarios, but that's, that's a big challenge. It's kind of a question as you pointed out, that there's only a fraction of the right of way that's yet to be developed alongside us. It's, there's going to be a lot of other obstacles that will come to complete that, even those properties do do that, so.
Well, it's, it's really interesting, you know, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I built a home in Ivan's, and it's probably where we retired. Well, I think the biggest thing that set me there, other than the weather, and it's beautiful down there, is the active transportation.
Yeah.
I mean, they have, I bet you they have almost as many trails as they have roads. Yeah, it's incredible. And St. George is the same way.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, it's interesting, even where my daughter lives in Spanish Fork, it's the same way. They are, they are investing.
We hire every developer.
Yeah.
Where we live on the west side, the developers were, had to set aside as part, as part of the development, transface. And then there's a connected trail that connects all the way through Lehigh. And it was nice because we could get around without, without crossing roads.
Well, as you said, we were, we were set, we did, I mean, I have some this morning, we go right on the legacy trail, we do that every so often, but just keep touching, do something. But he called the other night before, and then he said, hey, I need a new inner tube for my front tire. And he says, I cannot find one anywhere. But bike shops were helped, and everybody was out. Yeah, but it would have been two or three days before we had it.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, he thought he could just go wherever.
He just donated thirty of them to D I.
So I guess, I want you to.
There's never one by him, it was like basic stuff, like just messing around, all that stuff. Went to Sportsman Warehouse, they're wiped out. I mean, I can't believe, you know, just outdoor equipment is just gone.
We have a good friend who works for the bicycle shop, and they say every year they usually buy their inventory then in the, in the spring, late winter and spring. And he says that what they order then lasts until about August, September. And then they get, they have another interim order, and then for Christmas and so on, and then maybe they order for next year. He said they got their inventory in, and by May, they were out. They were all gone, which normally lasted until August or September.
I'm telling you, February is going to be the time to buy, like, the used bikes.
My friend said, my friend is going to start watching for used SUVs and used trailers because about March, April, you know, we're going to start doing those up.
Yeah, I, I would love to have a conversation with the traffic engineer that set a nine thousand car road in the future thirty years from now.
You know, one of the problems you're facing occasionally, though, when I was on council, I had so many people, when we started the act of transportation, I had so many people calling me and were upset. I mean, bikes should not be on the road. I mean, they don't pay taxes, they shouldn't be on the road. I mean, this is, this is how they're really doing it.
I have three cars and six bikes, so I mean, I, I pay money out of your share.
So do my share.
I'm on the, I'm on the highway, you know, I'm making four Facebook group, and I can't believe the number of people that say bikes don't pay taxes, get them the hell off the road.
Yeah.
Where, where, where are you coming from?
Sorry, that's my gripe of the night.
Okay. We were laying together a lot, but we appreciate it. I think it was a good point, Scott. Anything else from anyone? Lyle? All right, ready for a motion loser. And second. All right, without discussion, we are.